I call the Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of June 3, 2025 to order. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Here.
Hutton?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Aker?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Great. Want to welcome everyone here. Thank you for being a part of this meeting tonight. We're really quite glad that you all are here and very glad that you're here to share with us. And I'm sure many of you will, throughout this evening, an opportunity to speak. There is an opportunity that's carved out. There was a signup sheet that was outside this room on the way in for people who would like to speak when we get to the part of our meeting called Appearance of Citizens. If you did not sign up on the sheet, there'll still be an opportunity for you to speak. We'll just call you up then, and then you can go to the lecture and then. Just so you know, this sheet will explain kind of those opportunities. As we go forward in tonight's agenda, there'll be opportunities when comment, public comment is welcome, and so you'll be able to do that. Tonight, I have the privilege of inviting Reverend Jeremy Burden from First Christian Church, who's going to lead us in our invocation. Following that, Stacy Minor will lead us in our pledge. So if you all would please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor Hutton and City Council. So Father, we come before you tonight, and we give thanks and honor your name. God, we thank you that it's not just churches seeking heaven on earth, but also our city council. So God, thank you for men and women here, God, who are seeking your name, who are seeking your wisdom, who are seeking not just good ideas, but God ideas, to see heaven invade earth in the governmental arena. God, we just ask for your blessing upon them. God, I ask that you anoint their ears to hear, like I said, the good ideas, I mean, the God ideas, and not just the good ideas. God, that you'll bless them with wisdom, that you'll bless them with grace and favor. God, that you'll anoint their hands to succeed in everything that they do. God, we lift up our school system. God, we thank you as a year comes to a close and other years around the corner, but God, we just ask for your blessing to be upon our schools, that your spirit will continue to blow through the halls, our classrooms, over the leadership, over the principals, over the teachers and the students. God, we just bless them in your favor and grace. God, we bless them with strength. We bless them with creative ideas. God, we bless them to succeed and excel in everything that they put their hands to, God, and that our school system will be one that is marked with your grace and provision. God, we just lift up the school board and ask for your blessing upon them, God, that you'll continue to be with them as they make decisions. God, that ideas will come into their mind that have been sent straight from heaven, God, to really prosper our school system and do well. God, I just pray for the whole entire city of Bristol, God, that you'll continue to pour out upon us as a city, God, on both sides, on the Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia side. God, we are a city that needs you. We are a city that looks to you. God, we are thankful that you are a God that hears prayers, that you answer, and that you are a God of power. So Father, we just commit this meeting to you tonight. God, we thank you for your Holy Spirit that's in this place. God, we thank you for your power that's here to transform cities, schools, and everything that you do. God, we give you praise and honor, and we ask all these things. God, we ask for your favor and grace. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeremy and Stacy, for leading us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Ms. Bourgeois, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
I want to take a moment before we get into proclamations and recognition, just to establish a few things. I think there may be some other council folks that want the opportunity to speak as well. I'm very sincere when I want to say thank you all for being here this evening. It is a critical part of our governmental process that people feel that they have the right and do have the right to come to any of these meetings, our work sessions, and speak, ask their questions, and find out information. So thank you for being here. As we go forward, you know, you can probably feel the tension in the room. It's pretty obvious. There's been a lot of rhetoric and vitriol that has sort of banged around in the Ethernet for a while, and so hopefully tonight, we'll move through those things in a way that is positive and helpful for our school system and for our city, because it is not good that these two entities are sort of locked in some disagreements. That happens. We all know that happens in whatever institution we serve, whether it's in government or schools, whether it's in industry or churches. We know that we have a tendency to sometimes get crossways with one another, and that is something that's going on within our school system and within our city. It's not something that any of us want, but we're trying to work through it, and those challenges are in front of us. And we're trying our best to work through those in a positive process. So the fact that you all are here at the request of others is fantastic. We are delighted that you're here. I want to, I do want to see if I can clarify a few things for you. I know that there's questions on the table about bonuses. I have to tell you that at no point has council been opposed to bonuses. Our whole issue from the beginning has been about timing and when those bonuses would hit. We've been in constant conversation with the comptroller in terms of when bonuses for teachers that would come from the state would actually hit the bank and what fiscal year that was to be in. That was always the conversation. It was never the heart of this council that we were in opposition to school board or school employees getting a bonus. It was really about fiscal responsibility, which is the responsibility of this council. We have to work very hard to make sure that we are stewarding taxpayer dollars as well as we can, and that's the process we're in right now. This is tax budget season in county and state governments and city governments all across the country, but in particular, right here, and we're working through that process. The second thing is, in terms of, I know wrestling is a big question at the moment. Some of you may or may not know this, but I absolutely love wrestling. I wrestled at Tennessee High in my first year at Carson Newman. That's when I went to Carson Newman and tried to wrestle, it's when I found out I was not good. And so I love wrestling. My family has been a part of wrestling for a long time. My nephew Spencer Graybill was a wrestler at Tennessee High, paved the way for him to go to Carson Newman. It's been a part of his life ever since. My nephew Max Minor is currently on the team. We're very proud of his success. And so my heartbeat is, as with wrestling, and it's also with Tennessee High Athletics. If it hadn't been for football at Tennessee High, I don't think I would have gone to college. It opened the door for me to go to Carson Newman. And so I am a huge supporter of Tennessee High Athletics and Bristol, Tennessee City Schools. I think that's true for everybody on this council. I know that some people may or may not believe that, but that is as true as I can say it to you. We have a responsibility as a city council, as you know, to think about every citizen in this community, and we are working through the tax issues that are in front of us. So for me, the issues that are on the table have to do with taxes. It's not really so much about baseball stadiums or wrestling facilities, or it's not really about bonuses. It's not just, it's about all aspects of how we will implement taxes for the people of Bristol, Tennessee. This council's been working pretty hard to overcome some challenges that previous councils created. They were making the best decisions they could at the time, and we're trying to overcome some of the challenges from that. We had a reappraisal that hit, and everybody in this whole entire county has been impacted by those property reappraisals. That's had a tremendous impact on the sort of our tax rate as well as our property taxes, and we're looking at the issue that that's going to create. We had to raise taxes last year. We're trying very hard to think through that process this year. And so in all these conversations about indebtedness for a baseball stadium, as well as Melrose and all the costs there, this council, as well as our city staff, has worked extremely hard to try to figure out ways that we can make significant cuts and still keep Melrose and keep baseball in our budget, while at the same time not burdening the people of Bristol, Tennessee to the point where we tax ourselves out of business. And we are, we get emails, we've had contact from people in the community who've seen the tax rate, who understand the process that we're going through. And so I want you all to know that, as you raise your questions and concerns tonight about bonuses, you raise your questions and concerns about Melrose, about baseball, that this council is truly working as hard as they can on behalf of everyone within this community, including our school system. Granted, we have some work to be done between our school system and our city. We are trying to work through some of the disagreements that we've had and how those disagreements have gone. It's just a natural part of leadership and engaging with one another and trying to figure out how those things go. That's an ongoing project that we're all committed to. And so I just want you to know that as this meeting goes forward, as you have an opportunity to speak, as we open it up for you all to talk in a few minutes, things that you have to say, questions you have to say, I just wanted you to know on the front end that that's where we are. And so I want to open it up now to any other council member.
Well, actually, I have a prepared statement that I've thought long and hard about. I understand that some of you are here tonight with concerns about teacher and staff bonuses in this space, in the THS baseball program, and the future of wrestling in our schools. I want to address each of these matters clearly and directly. First, regarding teacher and staff bonuses. This council has never opposed those bonuses. The concern that arose and which the school system acknowledged centered around timing of payments. As a governing body, we have a legal obligation to ensure all expenditures fall within our fiscal calendar, which runs from July 1st to June 30th. That's not opposition. It's responsible financial oversight. Now, the THS baseball field, Todd Houston. Our commitment to upgrading that facility goes back more than three years. However, we've been told repeatedly and on the record that the school system does not want our involvement, and they're satisfied with the current state of Todd Houston Field. Our offer to partnership and help remains on the table, but we cannot force collaboration where it isn't welcome. On the topic of wrestling, we've been working toward a solution to make Melrose Building available for use. That effort continues despite public claims that this council is unwilling to act. Those claims are false, and frankly, they only delay the progress and erode trust. In all three of these areas, the council has operated in good faith, offering support, proposing solutions, and trying to work together. In some cases, we were close to agreement, only to see the terms change and new demands surface. That kind of shifting ground makes it difficult to move forward. Let me speak plainly. The city council represents the entire city. We are charged with weighing competing priorities and making difficult decisions, because every dollar we allocate comes from taxpayers. We cannot meet every request, especially when trust is strained and facts are misrepresented. You may have heard the claim that this council doesn't support schools. That's simply not true. What we've asked for is straightforward: transparency, accountability, collaboration. Unfortunately, too often, those requests are met with resistance, confrontational rhetoric, and shifting narratives that seem more political than student-focused. Take the stadium project, for example. The school system initially opposed it, then supported it, but only with additional demands. That kind of inconsistency undermines both trust and progress. We've also questioned financial decisions that deserve scrutiny. When bonus funds were under pressure, they were allocated first to administration and others, not the teachers. That raises legitimate concerns about priorities. Let me be clear about one thing and where I stand going forward. I will not support a budget that more than doubles our property tax rate to increase school funding. I sincerely hope that the school administration demonstrates a meaningful shift, especially in how it engages with this council and taxpayers we represent. Taxpayer dollars are not monopoly money. They are real sacrifices made by real people, and every one of those dollars deserves honest, responsible stewardship. This council's support for young people goes beyond school funding. We invest in parks, recreation, community programs that reach thousands of children across the city. That support is tangible, measurable, and growing. We can find a better path forward, one that respects our taxpayers, strengthens our community, and holds every public institution, including our schools, to the highest standards. Thank you.
Does any other member of council wish to speak at this point?
Sure. I didn't, can y'all hear me? Yes. I didn't come with a prepared statement, but I just wanted to say, I've been here a long time, so in our kids, it's been, I think, 20 years since our youngest one graduated, but we had three children at Avoca at Vance Junior High and at Tennessee High. And I came to this position through a lost school board election and through PTA and attending school board meetings for about seven years before I ran for school board and then later appointed to this position and have served with one loss to the city council before. But I just want to say, welcome. It's great to see people. There are some people who are here regularly. Some of those people are like, what is going on? So it's great to have you here. Hopefully, you'll come back. Local government is the most important government for all of us. It's the closest to the people, so remembering that. I want to say that this is a tough time. It's a tough time with what we're talking about tonight, and certainly what was covered by our mayor, et cetera, with looking at tax rates for our citizens. But I anticipate we're going to have some tougher times ahead, that we'll finish this process, but I'm envisioning that some of the changes that are coming are going to be pretty tough. And to face that, we absolutely, we know the community is important. We know that that's how we build ourselves up. It's how we serve our children. It's what we do is in community. So at this time, it's always important for community, and this time, it's absolutely critical for us to be able to work together in community as we go forward. So I hope that all of us here can put community as a high priority. Also, here, sometimes we talk about giving grace. Sometimes we have to give grace to people we work with that, you know, perhaps somebody doesn't understand, perhaps something is said that wasn't intended to be said, but we also, as we work in community, we need to be sure that we give each other grace. So that's just a little bit to add. Thank you.
Others?
The only thing that I would say is, welcome. Glad you're here tonight. Hope you'd be here in the future, moving forward. And I'll reserve my privilege for the end of the meeting, and I hope you will stay for the very end of the meeting. A lot of times, people get up and leave en masse, and you'll miss something. Thank you.
Ray? You good? Is there any way to get these turned up a little bit? I think they're not as loud as they normally are. Can we get the mics turned up a smidge? Just making sure.
Let's see. Tell us, Representative Crawford just came in.
Welcome. Representative Crawford, thank you for being here this evening, sir. Thank you. Glad to see you. It's always good to see you. All right. Tonight, we have a couple of proclamations and recognitions. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is the National Home Ownership Month proclamation, and Councilwoman Aker will read the proclamation, and Mr. Steve Willinger, who's a member of the Community Development Advisory Committee, will accept the proclamation.
A proclamation designating June 2025 as National Home Ownership Month, whereas June 2025 marks the 22nd anniversary of the commitment and central role of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, including the Federal Housing Administration, in providing accessible, affordable, and equitable homeownership opportunities to America nationwide, and whereas throughout the history of our nation, homeownership has been central to the American way of life. Homeownership plays a critical role in strengthening families and communities, and for those reasons, our nation has long promoted homeownership. And whereas the federal government and the state of Tennessee are working aggressively to make homeownership more affordable and more accessible, and to ensure that the dream of homeownership is available to all Americans, the city of Bristol, Tennessee joins with the federal and state government in this mission. Now, therefore, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaims June 2025 as National Homeownership Month.
Mr. Willinger, there we are. Yeah.
Mayor Hutton, City Manager Bourgeois, and members of City Council.
Steve, can you pull your microphone toward you?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Hutton, City Manager Bourgeois, and members of City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Community Development Advisory Committee, recognizing National Home Ownership Month. Homeownership is more than just owning a home. It's one of the most powerful ways individuals and families can build long-term wealth and financial security. Beyond financial strength, homeownership fosters a deeper connection to our communities. Homeowners participate in local elections, support public organizations, and invest in their neighborhoods. This commitment leads to stronger, safer communities, better schools, and a vibrant local economy. Real estate plays a vital role in our nation's prosperity. As a licensed Realtor and member of the CDAC, I take pride in our role in assisting with the planning and implementation of projects that directly support homeownership and community development. On behalf of the committee, I thank the city for recognizing the importance of homeownership and supporting the efforts that empower individuals and families to achieve this milestone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Thank you. And now, we have a proclamation on Farm and Fun Time, and Councilwoman Powers will read the proclamation, and radio Bristol Program Director Chris Trulson will accept the proclamation.
It's my privilege to read this this evening. I'm a member of the Birthplace of Country Music Board and know the good work that Radio Bristol is doing, not just here in Bristol, but nationally as well. We've got a really exciting program coming up this month, and I'm sure y'all will speak to that. Whereas Radio Bristol launched Radio Bristol's Farm and Fun Time in April of 2015, loosely based on the original WCYB program that started in 1946, and now entering its 10th season from 2015. And whereas Farm and Fun Time was created and is hosted by Radio Bristol Program Director Chris Trulson, who has a following regionally as well as nationally. Whereas Farm and Fun Time is Radio Bristol's flagship program and is shot live for television at both the Birthplace of Country Music Museum as well as Paramount Bristol. And whereas Farm and Fun Time is now syndicated on PBS Television on over 140 channels nationwide, and it is streamed, my understanding, is overseas. We have a real influence in the Asian market as well as England. Whereas Radio Bristol General Manager Josh Littleton has been nominated by the Capital Emmys for audio engineering, mixing, and design for his work on Farm and Fun Time. And whereas the program has featured many of the leading roots and American artists in the U.S., including The Mavericks, Del McCurry, Ciara Farrell, St. Paul and the Broken Bones, Dead South, and more, and continues to offer a platform for up-and-coming local and regional artists. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, Dr. Mark Hutton and Mrs. Becky Naye of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee hereby recognize the 10th anniversary of Radio Bristol's Farm and Fun Time this, the third day of June 2025. Congratulations.
While they're doing that, can you guys hear us? We need to turn these up? Can you hear us okay?
Who can you hear best?
We can hear, okay. I just want to make sure. What's that? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Powers, Mayor Hutton, and the whole city council for this honorable recognition. We're so appreciative to the city of Bristol for all the support you've given us over the past decade, truly. I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our amazing Radio Bristol staff, including our Radio Bristol General Manager Josh Littleton, who, as you said, was just Emmy-nominated for his work on Farm and Fun Time, production assistant Ella Patrick, as well as our great marketing department, to which are here, Ashley and Charlene, and our executive director, Birthplace of Country Music, Melissa Roberts, as well. And it should be mentioned, we can't do the work that we do with Farm and Fun Time and Radio Bristol without our amazing volunteer pool, much of which are made of Bristolians, and we're so proud to be working with so many folks who make that work so gratifying. We're proud to see the impact that both Radio Bristol and Farm and Fun Time are having in our community. Farm and Fun Time has become a catalyst for tourism in downtown Bristol. Just this year, we've had folks from over 20 states come Just this year, we've had folks from over 20 states come to shows in downtown Bristol. And through national syndication on PBS, we're seeing a growing audience and interest in both our show and music culture as a whole. Since its launch, Radio Bristol has made it a priority to shine a light on the amazing music culture we have right here in downtown Bristol and the surrounding region. And we're so proud to offer a platform to so many up-and-coming voices in our area. We'd like to thank all of our community supporters and partners who have helped us to continually grow and establish awareness, not only locally, regionally, but also nationally, including Paramount Bristol, Eastman Credit Union, WCYB, Bristol Hotel, Blue Ridge PBS, and Explore Bristol and the city of Bristol, both Tennessee and Virginia. We believe Radio Bristol and Farm and Fun Time will continue to keep Bristol on the map and help bring people near and far together to celebrate our rich musical heritage.
Thank you so much.
Chris, would you tell them about the Farm and Fun Time in June? Get a plug whenever you can.
Oh, I didn't plug our show. Yeah, June 19th, we're celebrating our 10th anniversary of Radio Bristol with a live show at the Paramount with the great band War and Treaty. We would love to see you all there. And thank you for reminding me for that. We're doing shows periodically at the Paramount and Birthplace of Country Music as well.
Thank you, Chris. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we're moving now to Board of Education Liaison Report. Dr. Tudor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a few announcements for you. Just wanted to point out that Chase Wolfenbarger, senior, who just graduated, is a three-time state triple jump champion. She just won that for the third time. So, kudos to her. Just some announcements for the summer. We have our Viking Youth Sports Camps that started last week. They run throughout the summer. You can check our Tennessee High School website for dates and times and our athletic website as well. Summer school started this week. We have locations at Fairmount, TMS, and Tennessee High School. We had over 500 students attend district-wide, so we're excited about that showing. Also, same as last summer, we have free meals every Thursday in June through July 10th at Evoqua Elementary on Thursday evenings from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. For any child under 18, they don't have to be a student in our district. They get breakfast and lunch for seven days each week. So that's a great opportunity for our families. Again, repeating same as last year and previous years, our book bus is back again this summer in partnership with the Bristol Public Library. We appreciate that partnership. In partnership with the library, any student who comes to that book bus gets to keep the books they pick out, and they get to keep them in their home for their, they don't have to return them, which is fantastic. They don't have to have a library card or anything like that. They just visit the bus and pick out a book. If you are not aware, I feel compelled, because I think you all have followed his health story, but Mr. Ray passed away unexpectedly Sunday evening. And I know that you all have, we've talked about that in previous months, and I thought that you would want to know that. I didn't have plans to say anything else this evening. That was the end of my notes. But a friend last week said, if it's not life or death, it's not life or death. And the reality of losing somebody like Mr. Ray in our district is really, puts that in perspective for me this evening. And I think that it should put it in perspective for the two governing bodies of this city and the school district. Some of the things that I heard this evening, first of all, Mayor Hutton, I appreciate your comments to start the meeting, and I hope that's the spirit and the sentiment that we can carry forward from this moment. Some of the other things that were said, quite frankly, are not true. And I welcome an opportunity for both bodies to get together and have a joint meeting and talk about it. We tried to schedule that, and because of scheduling conflicts, that didn't happen. But I hope that's the spirit of where we are this evening, that we can sit down together and talk through our issues and figure out what's best, not only for the city of Bristol, but for the school system. And I want to point out that I think anybody in the room would be hard-pressed to find a superintendent or a female in this community that is a bigger supporter of baseball. I am a baseball fan through and through for many reasons. But my priority at the moment is a displaced wrestling program. And it's been that way for many months. And I just feel like I need to say that publicly and reiterate that to you all, that that has not wavered. And we can get into the nuts and bolts of all of this, but I don't think that's productive. We've not been able to productively come together and have a conversation and work through these issues. And quite frankly, although I am super proud that these people are here, and I've never felt more supported, it's embarrassing to me that as a leader in my district, we can't come together with you all in our school board and work through our issues. We should be more professional and better than that for this community. So I hope the spirit of your comments are really what you intend, and I hope we can get together as quickly as possible. I hope that I can call Kelly tomorrow, and we're having a meeting with Kurt and Mike, and we're formulating a plan to move forward.
Thank you. I would ask that if you all would please silence your phones, that would be really helpful. I meant to mention that earlier, so thank you. Need to move on now to section of public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight on tonight's agenda. The first is Ordinance 25-8, an ordinance fixing the rates charged for water sold by the city of Bristol. This hereby, public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 25-8. Ms. Bourgeois will present.
Thank you, Mayor. At the May 6 City Council meeting, the council held the first reading of ordinance 25-8, setting the water rates for the city. As discussed at that meeting, the water fund is a proprietary fund that must operate like a business with regard to net income and net position. If that fund runs to the negative, the city risks having the state set rates and controls for us. The city had Municipal Technical Advisory Service, or MTAS, perform a study of those rates charged by the city's utilities, including water, and make rate recommendations. Ordinance 25-8 incorporates MTAS's recommendations, and those recommendations include no more increase, or I'm sorry, no more 1,000 gallon, first 1,000 gallons to be free of charge. That will be effective July 1. That makes Bristol's billing policies consistent with neighboring jurisdictions. Also, beginning July 1, the rate charged to utility districts not under a separate contract will be at 3.48 per 1,000 gallons. And then, effective with the first billing cycles in July of 2026, 2027, 2028, and 2029, the rates per 1,000 gallons will increase by 5%. And then, beginning with the first billing cycle in July of 2030, and annually thereafter, the rates per 1,000 gallons would be adjusted either upward or downward in accordance with the municipal cost index that's published in the December issue of the American City and County publication. At this time, staff does recommend approval of ordinance 25-8, setting those water rates as just explained.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter, ordinance 25-8? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. Moving now to ordinance 25-9. It's an ordinance fixing the rates charged for sanitary sewer service chart provided by the city of Bristol. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 25-9. Ms. Bourgeois, will you present on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Also, at the May 6 City Council meeting, the council held the first reading of ordinance 25-9, setting the rates charged for sanitary sewer within the city. As discussed previously with the water rates, the sanitary sewer fund is also a proprietary fund that must operate like a business. And if we run in the negative, we do run the risk of having the state come in and set those rates and controls for us. And also, as with the water fund, we had MTAS come in and perform a study of those rates and make recommendations to the city on what we should do moving forward. Staff is recommending, and ordinance 25-9 incorporates the recommendations that MTAS made with their Scenario 6. And those recommendations include increasing the monthly service charge, the inflow and infiltration charge, and the per 1,000 gallon use charge for customers inside the city by 10%, effective the first billing cycle of July, increasing the monthly service charge, INI charge, and per 1,000 gallon use charge for customers outside the city by 20%, effective that same billing cycle. And then, effective with the first billing cycles in July of 2026, 2027, 2028, and 2029, increasing charges by 5%. And then, beginning with the first billing cycle in July of 2030, and annually thereafter, again, increasing the rates, well, adjusting the rates either upward or downward per the municipal cost index that's published in the December issue of the American City and County publication.
Thank you. Will anyone in the audience like to address counsel on ordinance 25-9? Seeing none, this ordinance is now, this hearing is now closed. Public hearing now is open for ordinance 25-10, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, general provisions relating to zoning, Chapter 3, residential districts, and Chapter 4, business districts of the zoning ordinance, to include requirements for orientation of residential structures located within such districts. This public hearing for ordinance 25-10 is now open. Community Development Director Cher Thong will now present.
Thank you, Mayor Hutton. Good evening, mayors, city council members. Tonight, I'm here to present the public hearing, text amendment to amend Chapter 2, 3, and 4 of the zoning ordinance to add a residential orientation standard for all new single-family residential structures in the city. This task came to us from the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did review this ordinance at their April meeting and did unanimously vote to send forward a positive recommendation to City Council on the changes. We will be amending Chapter 2, 3, and 4 with this ordinance amendment. Chapter 2 will lay out the framework requirement for each new residential home to have an entryway in the home. And Chapter 3 will provide a reference in our orientation requirement for our development standards. I think that's the basic summary of the ordinance changes. We did advertise this as required. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the ordinance.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on ordinance 25-10? Public hearing is now closed. Right. Moving now to the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any item that is not on the agenda for formal consideration. A response may or may not be given at this time. Since counsel may or may not, or the city manager may not be prepared to effectively respond to the concern, the city manager might then look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. There's been a list provided here, of folks who've signed up, but again, we may open it up for others if the need so arises. So let me begin. So when we call your name, if you'll come to the podium here, please make sure that you tell us your name and your address for the record, please. So the first person on the list here is Amber Davis.
While she's coming up, there's a noise that sounds like a phone or something? If somebody... Thank you very much. Thanks. Well, maybe, thank you. I appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Amber Davis. My address is 404 Blountville Highway. All right. I teach English and Theater Arts in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. My days do not end when the bell rings. I spend a lot of my free time raising money with my students so that they can have opportunities and not limitations. I spend countless after-school hours and rehearsals, working through lines, music, choreography, not to mention weekends, spent traveling to competitions, or just waiting outside the auditorium well past 11:00 p.m. for parents to pick up their kids from a show. My whole family, husband, kids, parents, friends, they show up and build sets and paint sets. Our choir teacher, Jason Whitson, spends his evenings and weekends much like mine. Brad Goodman teaches construction at Tennessee High School, has volunteered his personal time the last two years to help build professional-quality sets for our musicals, because it takes a village to do what we do. In the summer, we're still working, planning, prepping, building new content, teaching summer school, going to classes ourselves. As an English teacher, I see firsthand how much direct and specific feedback matters. If I take just four minutes to read, grade, and thoughtfully respond to a single essay, a class of 20 students would take 800 minutes. That's over 13 hours of grading for one assignment. Most of my freshman English classes are quite a bit more than 20. Teachers don't work 7:30 to 3:00, like many people think. We work when the work still needs to be done, whether that's late at night, on weekends, or during holiday breaks. We also attend sports games, band concerts, choir concerts, dance recitals, and art shows on our own time, because we believe in showing up for kids in every arena. Alex Greer teaches Spanish at Tennessee High School and attends almost every game for every sport, because he believes that it matters to students, and it does. We don't need or want a pat on the back. We do this job because it's what we chose to do. It's something that I love to do. What we need and what every teacher deserves is respect. Respect for our time, our dedication, and the difference we make every single day. Respect comes in the acknowledgement that the cost of living has increased dramatically. Teachers deserve to be compensated for their time. Public schools are the cornerstone of our communities and should be staffed and respected accordingly. We aren't just teaching subjects, we're building futures. And this is something I'm just going to add, in honor of Home Ownership Month, I think you would be shocked to discover how many staff members, including teachers, can't afford to own a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Butcher is now on the list.
Thank you, councilpeople. I appreciate the opportunity. I really appreciate all the opportunities you have to speak. Not everybody affords that to a citizen, so I think that's exemplary. I'm here wearing two hats tonight. One is a member, elected member of the school board of Bristol Tennessee City Schools, and also is a citizen. I live at 120 Skyline Drive. I think it'd be appropriate right now for me to read a portion of a letter that was sent to our Teacher Advisory Council by me on May 20, 2025. I'll quote, "The future of a healthy and vibrant school system cannot be taken for granted. No matter the evidence of past accomplishment, public schools are in pivotal time as far as financial needs and support are concerned. On Tuesday, June 3, at 6:00 p.m. at the Slater Center, City Council will consider a budgeted amended amendment request for the coming school year. I continue to ask for your support for our schools by attending the council meeting and encouraging your colleagues to join us at the June 3 meeting. Recently, on the city's Facebook page, I was named individually as encouraging Bristol, Tennessee city staff to attend the June 3 meeting to make our voices heard. I welcome this recognition as an accurate assessment of my commitment to Bristol, Tennessee City Schools community, as it portrays my position on participation in local government. We, as a teaching community, have been questioned in the past for our lack of concern and participation in the workings of the city. In addition to being a civic responsibility, being present at governmental meetings demonstrates our commitment to the city as well as our commitment to the district." As far as, it's already been said very eloquently by our director of schools, Dr. Tudor, but as a member of the school board, I certainly also come tonight to ask you to support a fully funded budget for 2025 that reflects both the improvements to a baseball stadium and also for the Melrose facility that can be used for our multipurpose, particularly for our wrestling program. Now, as an individual citizen, I know that the enhanced quality and the things that we're asking you to do as a system and as a city, or the infrastructure of our city, come at a great cost. I just want to tell you that personally, I'm more than willing to accept a tax increase that helps fund amenities for my quality of life here in Bristol. Thank you.
Next is Preston Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Preston Roberts. Address 109 Clooney Circle, Bristol, Tennessee. I'm a resident of Bristol and Tennessee High as head baseball coach. I am here this evening to express my support for the new stadium project at Todd Houston Field. I believe this project will significantly enhance our sense of community pride and provide the youth in our school system with the type of facilities they need and deserve. I urge you to collaborate with your colleagues across the city and school system and continue to pursue partnership with Boyd Sports. I was named head baseball coach in 2013. At this point, I made it my mission to make this job about the players, school, the families, and the community. The first sign I hung in our locker room is still... The first sign I hung in our locker room is still there, and it was actually made by an art teacher, Mr. Sean Graham. It reads, "Play hard, play smart, play for Bristol." We wanted to make this community that loves baseball very proud. The first question I was asked by Nate Hubbard, who is no longer with the Bristol Herald Courier, as I took the head coaching job, his first question was, "How are you gonna end Tennessee High Baseball's twenty-six-year regional drought?" And that became our mission. Four years later, we beat Science Hill to make it to regionals for the first time, ending that twenty-six-year drought. I vividly remember the community excitement and making the comments to Casey Gads, who is still at W C Y B News, as I was getting showered with a Gatorade bath, thinking we won the state championship or something. And I said, "This is for Bristol." I remember vividly saying that many years ago, and I truly believe that. In twenty eighteen, the next year, we beat D. B., knocked Dobbins Bennett out of the, ended their season to go to another regional. In twenty nineteen, beat Science Hill for a regional championship, which ended a forty-one year drought. Since then, we've been to multiple conference, district, regional, and sectional championships. We also have been to multiple state tournaments, finishing third in the state in twenty twenty-two. However, in many ways, the deck was always, has always been stacked against us. Our facilities were always and continue to be inferior to our local opponents. Sullivan East, Elizabethan, Dobbins Bennett, Science Hill, all have had indoor facilities to train in during harsh weather. They have always had turf fields to utilize in our unpredictable spring weather. As a coach, I have never allowed our kids to use this as an excuse, even though we knew it was a significant disadvantage. In closing, I urge the city, I urge the council to approve the necessary funding and develop the necessary relationships to pursue this valuable community project, a project that will benefit Tennessee High School and Bristol. Thank you for your time, and your consideration is greatly appreciated.
Now, Ron Kirk.
My name's Ron Kirk, and I live at one seventy-five Robinson Walk in Fairfield, Bristol, Tennessee. I wanted to speak on the subject of property taxes. I may be too late in looking at the agenda for tonight, but I sat down and actually did some pencil work, and I don't know what you can do, or how feasible it is to do, with everybody needing more money, because the cost of living has gone up everywhere, houses, water, sewer, groceries, it's all gone up. But I wanted to give you an example of persons probably middle-class, living in a middle-class neighborhood. I have a townhouse, nothing extraordinary, but I'm like everybody else, my assessed appraisal went up about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the previous year. So, what I did is I pulled my tax files from the last couple of years of the city and the county, and I sat down and took a pencil, I understand how it's calculated, and said, "Okay, let's just look at the city. Over the last multitude of years, I've paid in the seven hundred dollars, anywhere from seven twenty to seven, I think, eighty, seven ninety. My city taxes have been in the seven hundreds. Last year, I was attended the meeting when y'all took the rate that you charged from, I think it was one point nine eight on the hundred, is that right?
Yes.
And it had to go to two point two five. For what it's worth, I said that night, and I'll say again, I totally support it. The taxes have not gone up in Bristol, and I don't like paying any better than anybody else, but we have to do that, to run a city and a school system. So, my taxes went up ninety-four dollars. Do I like it? No. Is it gonna kill us? Not, no. But I understand, it's important, and I supported it, and I still support it. But when I put a pencil to what's going on now, I wanna give you some other numbers. My taxes went to eight oh four last year, which was a, like I said, it was a ninety-four dollar increase over the previous two, three years. I took the appraised, not value of my home, the assessed value that they use to figure the taxes, and if you all stay with two dollars and twenty-five cents per hundred, my taxes from the city are gonna be one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars when I have to pay them at the end of the year. That's huge. That's huge. And can I do it? Yeah, I'll figure it out, I'm, you know, but there's a lot of people. The other thing I looked up is the poverty rate of Bristol, Tennessee, and I'm not gonna get in on the negative side. There's people here that simply are not gonna be able to do this, folks, and there's people here that have homes that are now praised at four, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. I understand that, they've worked for them, but nobody gives you that. But if mine went up five hundred and ninety-one dollars in one year, I can't imagine the people that live, everybody's getting incremental huge increases. Now, y'all may have already set the rate for the property taxes, I don't know.
Mr. Kirk, sorry.
The only thing I probably should have done, to be fair, because I'll tell you something I'm big on, I don't mind somebody bringing me a problem, but I've been president of the association board out there for a number of years. Bring me any problem you want, but don't bring it to me unless you have a reasonable solution. Don't gripe and tell me what's wrong unless you can tell me how we reasonably can fix that. I probably should have sat down and said, "What's the rate gonna be if it just goes up a hundred or two hundred more?" Because it would probably be, I'm trying to do math in my head real quick, buck fifty, buck seventy-five, a hundred? There's two, you're in control, excuse me, you're in control of the percentages being charged of the assessed rate that you weren't in control of.
Right.
I get that.
Yeah. You're, you're up on your time.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, sir. Thank you. We appreciate it. Just to maybe address part of your question, Mr. Kirk, part of what we're gonna be doing tonight is looking at the tax rate on first reading, so we're gonna be talking about things that you're, that you just mentioned, so thank you very much, tonight. Yes, thank you. We really appreciate you taking time to be here, thank you. Ella Patrick, please.
I embarrassingly accidentally saw that, I thought it was a sign of cheating.
I like you a lot, yeah. Awesome. All right, Krista Burton.
I didn't think before I sat over there. Good evening. I wanna first start, just to add this in, in case I run out of time. I wanna say thank you to all of our city teachers, the support staff, the nurses, they hold a special place in my heart. I wanna thank all the people that feed our students every day, all our bus drivers that get the kids to school. There are a lot of people that really do a lot of great things, and I don't think that they get the recognition that they deserve. So, I'm here as a parent of kids that attend Bristol, Tennessee City Schools, whom are also involved with four of the athletic programs at Tennessee High, one of which is Tennessee High School Wrestling. My family has been involved with wrestling for over eight years, starting with the Bristol Wrestling Club, the Tennessee Middle School Wrestling Program, and now Tennessee High School. I am saying this because I have seen the wrestling program grow rampantly at all of these levels over the years. Starting in two thousand and twenty-one, the middle school program, led by a new coach, built the program from just a handful of kids to well over fifty. This same year, four years ago, the high school hired a new coach, and the program has quadrupled in size since he took over. I think that speaks volumes about the coaching leadership and impact that this program has had on our wrestling family and Bristol, Tennessee athletics. These wrestlers and coaches have nowhere to practice currently, nowhere. They literally have nowhere to practice. We have heard for years that a wrestling practice facility was going to be built on the field above the track for the team, it never happened. Then we were told that the wrestlers would be moving to the building on Melrose as their facility, but it would be shared with other athletic teams, which also never happened. Now, we are in the year two thousand and twenty-five, and the indecisiveness of this issue has implications for our kids in the program. I want to stress the importance of all our athletic programs, the outlet they provide for our kids, keeping them out of trouble and off the streets, connecting them to their community, this community, not to mention the revenue that is brought to the city from athletic tournaments and so forth. I hope that both entities, both entities will come together in unison and solve some issues, so that wrestling has a place to call home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Amy Henley.
Amy Henley, three zero five, Three Oaks Drive. I didn't prepare anything, I just wanna say that, first, I think that the teachers getting a bonus, the school system getting a bonus, I don't think it should have been made as public as it was. I think it caused division, confusion among the entire community, and if it was really about timing, which I believe that money comes from the state and not the city, it really shouldn't have been made that, that public, so I think that we should probably all just come together and be really honest about where that money's coming from, and that it was just about timing. Second of all, a lot of this, I think, can be solved by us hitting the pavement and talking to businesses and bringing more businesses into this community that would raise money, that would allow us to afford our athletes what they need to be successful. I don't think anybody takes into account the pressure that is on the coaches and the athletes in Bristol to compete with the Science Hills and the Dobbins Bennetts of the world. It's nearly impossible to do without the right facilities and the right equipment, the right resources for our athletes, so I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And just as a mom of three boys that came through the system, a husband that works in the system, a future grandchild that will be part of the system, it touches everybody in the community at some point in some time, and we can say that we're just talking about everybody that lives in Bristol. Everybody that lives in Bristol is impacted by our school system, so when we talk about the impact that that has on the entire community, the school system is the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Shuler.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Josh Shuler, and I'm here representing the wrestling programs at Tennessee High and Tennessee Middle School. We're seeking your support in allowing us to use the city-owned building at five fifteen Melrose Street as a place to call home for our wrestling program. Wrestling, wrestling is more than just a sport. It's a discipline that teaches our youth commitment, resilience, and respect. In just the four short years since I've been here, we've transformed Tennessee High's wrestling program from just fourteen athletes to one that's now bursting at the seams with fifty-seven boys and girls. At Tennessee Middle School, the team consistently has forty-five to fifty wrestlers on its roster. Not only are we one of the largest programs in the state, but we've also built a strong winning culture, and more importantly, we're changing lives. On top of that, we've managed to win back-to-back regional titles despite not having an appropriate facility. Right now, though, we're struggling without a consistent practice space. Without a reliable facility, it's difficult to provide the structured, safe environment our athletes need and deserve. This building could change that. It would allow us to train consistently, store equipment properly, and continue growing the program to reach even more young people in our community, including many who may not find their place in other sports or school activities. We're not asking for a handout, we're ready to work with the city on maintenance, scheduling, and making sure the space is respected and well-cared-for. We just need the opportunity. With your support, we can turn our underu, turn an underused building into a hub for growth and transformation, a place where young people develop not only as athletes, but as responsible, resilient members of our community. There is nothing more important to the future of our city than the youth who will one day lead it. And finally, I ask everyone involved in this decision to consider who is truly most affected. It's not the City Council, it's not the school system, and it's not even me as the coach. It's the young men and women who have chosen to dedicate their time, energy, and hearts to representing their school, their community, and the city of Bristol. These are kids who could have chosen a different path, one that might not lead to such positive outcomes, but instead, they've chosen discipline, teamwork, and pride in where they come from. Thank you for considering this, we hope you'll join us in making this vision a reality.
Now, it's, I'll make sure I get this correct, Brian Wright, is it Bright or Rife? Is it Wright? Wright, Rife, sorry. Sorry, Brian, I thought your T was an F, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Brian Rife from three hundred Robin Road, and I'm here today just as a member of the community. My son plays on the Tennessee High baseball team and used to wrestle as well. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, he found out he wasn't that good of a wrestler in middle school, so a little bit early.
Probably, yeah.
But I'm here to talk about the Todd Houston Field situation. This seems, from the outside looking in, like a deal that's almost too good to be true, when you look at it from the outside. It's a very large, very nice, three-way partnership between Boyd Sports, the city, and the school board. It would provide a place for the state liners to play, which they did not have last year. It would provide a twenty-year facility, a fantastic facility for the Tennessee High baseball team, and for the kids to use over the next ten or twenty years. It's a great deal. Three weeks ago, it looked like that deal was completely on track, rolling down, you know, the trains, ready to go, three tracks all going in the same direction. Today, there is a resolution before the City Council that appears to me to rescind the entire deal. Why? Why were the three trains that were all on the same track now going in a different direction? Apparently, it's because of this building at Melrose. So, I would ask the city to please work with the school board to get some sort of access for the wrestling team to Melrose or a similar-type facility. I know they have not practiced at Melrose before, they've been at the Big Lots parking lot, so please work with the school board to get some sort of access for a fantastic wrestling team, to have a similar facility to what they've used in the past. And I would also ask the school board, school board, please, please work with the City Council to get this deal back in place, and please do not risk the entire eight-point-five-million-dollar project for Todd Houston Field that includes two million dollars of private equity coming into the deal, which is incredible, really, it's an incredible three-way partnership. Please don't risk that entire deal for the baseball team, for access to this one single facility, and access to a facility that the city and, the city has, but the school board and the wrestling team have never had before, if I'm not mistaken. It's gonna take leadership on behalf of both parties, the City Council and the school board, to get back together, sit down, and I think I heard Dr. Tudor mention, to have meetings together. I think that's what it's gonna take to get this done and to get these three tracks back going in the same direction, and I would urge you to try to do that, to try to save this partnership, to save this Todd Houston deal for the city, for residents of the community, for the school board, but I think, just like Coach just said, for the kids. It's the kids that are really gonna be able to use this facility for the next twenty years. I have been around every baseball facility in the area, and I can promise you, Tennessee High facilities are the worst. They really need improvement. They're even worse than Unicoi, unfortunately, who just got flooded. They're even worse than Unicoi, unfortunately, who just got flooded. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Oh, and please, the last thing, please keep in mind, if the deal falls through, there's no Todd Houston renovations, the city loses out on the $8.5 million, the school board loses out as well, there's no state liners, my guess is they're gone, they're back to Greenville, and there's still no Melrose. Please work together and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rife.
If I may.
Wait one second.
I wanted to ask Ms. Boujwa, shall we wait until we get to the memorandum to address the rescension?
Probably, yes. So that is the end of folks that have signed up, but there's probably some of you who walked right by it, didn't know that it was there. So if there's anybody that would like to address council, you're more than welcome to do that. You can come to the podium. We'll give you that opportunity. Seeing none, the appearance of citizens is now complete. We're moving on now to the appointments that we have. We have several here. The first one is for the Better Property Board. We have one candidate for one open position, that's Anita Morrell. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I would speak on behalf of Anita. She has been a great influence in the real estate market. She understands the housing market here, and I think she would be a tremendous asset to the Better Housing Board.
I think I would just like to add, she was my broker for five years when I was in real estate, and I think that she will be wonderful, and I'm so glad to see her here tonight.
Yeah, and I just want, we can say it all at the beginning, but we thank everybody who applies to serve on our boards and commissions. It's a great way to serve the community. We have quite a few. Some of them we serve on also, some of them we don't. So we appreciate everybody stepping up to volunteer for those positions. And also, sometimes, people do come and attend when the appointments happen, and as Ray said, Anita is here tonight, and that's gracious of her to be here as she's nominated for this position. So thank you very much.
Okay, the ballots have now been passed to the city manager.
All right, thank you. We have Councilwoman Akerd voting for Anita Morrell, Councilwoman Fire Robin voting for Anita Morrell, Mayor Hutton voting for Anita Morrell, Councilwoman Powers voting for Anita Morrell, and Vice Mayor Turner voting for Anita Morrell.
Thank you, Ms. Morrell, for being willing to serve in that capacity. The next one is a Community Development Advisory Committee. We have one candidate for one open position on the Community Development Advisory Board, that's Marguerite Buckley. Does anyone, any member of council want to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I can speak on behalf of Marguerite, that she is active community member, active in the faith community, and also active in the nonprofit. She's done training at Abuse Alternative, she's done training at Branch House. So she's well-informed with some of those things that are, things that are talked about some at our Community Development Advisory Board. And Steve Willinger spoke earlier, and he serves on that board, and Tyler Gillenwater was here, who is our staff person. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think all the ballots have been passed along.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Akerd has Marguerite Buckley, Mayor Hutton has Marguerite Buckley, Vice Mayor Turner has Marguerite Buckley, and Councilwoman Powers has Marguerite Buckley. I don't have Councilwoman Fire Robin.
You don't?
No.
Okay. It's right here.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Fire Robin has Marguerite Buckley.
Thank you. We appreciate Marguerite Buckley for doing that. Thank you for serving on that committee. We have another one for the Biflir Public Library Foundation. We have one candidate for that open position, Jessica Barnett. Would any member of council like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
So Jessica has served in several positions. She's been active with Believe in Bristol, and she works at Northeast State. And the Library Foundation is one that we appoint to, that it is an independent foundation, but they asked for us to appoint Bristol, Tennessee, Bristol, Virginia, to appoint members to that. And we have other programs, a few others, that ask us to do that. So that's, we don't have any oversight of that foundation or anything that's directly related, but we're asked to appoint people.
Did you have any? No, okay. All of them have been passed in.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Akerd has Jessica Barnett, Councilwoman Fire Robin has Jessica Barnett, Mayor Hutton has Jessica Barnett, Councilwoman Powers has Jessica Barnett, and Vice Mayor Turner has Jessica Barnett.
Great. Thank you, Jessica, for serving on that committee. The next one is the Sullivan County Board of Equalization. We have three candidates for two open positions on the Board of Equalization. First is Malin Luttrell, Kathy Mullins, and Eric Spicer. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I would, Mayor. I think Malin would do a great job, having served on council for many years and having an understanding of property values, tax rates, all that that involves. I also think that Kathy Mullins, with her experience, again, with real estate, has been an active member in the community, has a great understanding of home values and the implications of assessed values. So for that reason, I will, those reasons, I'll be voting for Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins.
So Lee, I'll ditto Malin's, and also I'll add for Kathy Mullins. She served a long time on our planning commission as well, so she is well set. And just to, if you look it up or whatever, we have, the Equalization has five members, and we have one member, David Warren, who has served as well, and he is continuing to serve, but we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work put on the Board of Equalization right now, and people who work full-time jobs have difficulty giving up the huge amount of time that's needed this year. So we're appointing a couple other people that can help with that burden and split it up so that they can get through the work and it doesn't negatively affect people's business.
All right, I think you have all of them.
I do, thank you. Councilwoman Akerd has Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins, Mayor Hutton has Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins, Councilwoman Powers has Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins, Vice Mayor Turner has Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins, and Councilwoman Fire Robin has Malin Luttrell and Kathy Mullins.
Thank you very much, Malin, Kathy, we appreciate you both serving on that. For those of you who may need to know, that board is actually the one that will be, anybody that asked for their tax assessment, property tax assessment to be reviewed, that's the group that does that work. So just so you know, that's who will be serving on that, on our behalf, for the city of Bristol. We're moving now to ordinances and resolutions. We have two ordinances off first reading to consider tonight. The first is Ordinance 25-13. It's an ordinance to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, ending June 30, 2026. Finance Director Holly Vernon will present.
Holly, as you present, can you also explain what the process is with voting now? Ordinances require two readings, two votes, two different times.
We can do that. We'll do that, just present while, yeah, we'll take care of that. Yeah, Kelly's got that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So first reading is the proposed draft budget for fiscal year 2026. The budget totals 155, sorry, 155,439,488, reflecting a 4.5% increase over the 2025 budget. This budget continues the city programs and services as in the past while still making strategic capital improvements and meeting the future needs of the community. The municipal government portion of the expenditures total 96,4212, reflecting an increase of 5.9% over the fiscal year 25 budget. That does include police and fire wage increases based on the department analyses that were done, and it includes a 4.7% pay increase for city, other city departments. The school system expenditures of the budget totals 59,435,276, and that reflects a 2.5% increase over the 2025 budget.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of council for Ms. Varen?
Mayor, if I may, I do have one item or a discussion to present, if you don't mind, to add on to Holly's presentation. Just to state, the draft budget 2025-13 includes an estimated tax rate of $2.04, but staff has been working, as was discussed at the Friday work session, and will continue to work on ways to reduce that rate. This rate will remain a draft rate, however, until we receive the final certified tax rate from the state, which will be after a final budget is adopted. But based on last Friday's special called Work Session and the continued staff analysis, staff would recommend or offer that when city council acts tonight on the first read of Ordinance 25-13, that you amend the ordinance to include budgeted revenues and expenditures based on a rate of $1.98 instead of $2.04. Staff will then continue to work on the final budget numbers and ask that city council hold a special called Work Session again next week, and that the second reading of Ordinance 25-13 at the June 19 meeting would reflect the final amendments to limit that tax rate as much as possible. It is our intent to do as much as we can to limit that tax rate increase. We understand the impact it has to our residents, but we also understand the needs that we have from the city's operations perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to take any action on Ordinance 25-13?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 25-13 with the understanding that this does not set an exact tax rate, because we do not yet know what the certified tax rate from the state of Tennessee will be, especially with so many assessed values being under appeal. I also understand that the budget included in Ordinance 25-13 was originally proposed with an anticipated tax rate of $2.04. I move to amend, as Ms. Boujwa suggested, Ordinance 25-13 as a whole, including the budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures, so that revenues and expenses are based on a tax rate of $1.98.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on the amended motion that you just heard?
It's on, I'm sorry. It's taking our, we don't have a defined tax rate just yet from the state. Everything is projected at the moment. We're waiting on the appeals to be dealt with by our Board of Equalization, the people that we just approved, along with others. And so it may even be after the 1st of July, before all of that work is done. So we are asking that it be a placeholder tax rate of $1.98 moving forward to approve our budget based on that tax rate.
If you have a question, if you'll come to the microphone and state your name and address, just, it's for the record.
Blair Henley, 305 Three Oaks Drive. The only question I have is, the $59 million that the expenditures are for education, which is a ton of money, where does that come from? Is the city writing us? Is the city writing a school system a check for that, or does it come from the state, from TISA funding? Like, is that a true expenditure of city funds? That's, I just, I'm trying to understand it, so that's why I'm asking.
The school gets, has several sources of funding. One is the city, other one is the county, and the other one's the state, and there's probably some other monies in there as well. And so our portion of, so we, as a city council, we have to approve their budget, but we have a particular portion of that budget. It's actually probably helpful for you all to know that 40% of the city's budget goes to the school system, about 50 cents on every tax dollar is for the school system.
Okay, so how much does the city actually put into that 59 million? That's what I want to know. Isn't it like 5-point something, or?
What is the total for this year's, for the 25, 26? What is that? Was five?
So it's just over 5 million.
Just over 5 million?
Yep.
Yes. So, and as you can look in the budget here, as you look in the budget here, that's a 2.5% increase from last year, from, it's a 1.467 increase from last year for the general purpose school fund.
Well, I mean, of the 50 cents is, so, as we're saying of the, so, of the previous tax rate of 2.25, 74 cents of that 2.25 went to the school system. Under this new, with the reassessment, we're hearing now, because we do not have a number, 50 cents. So if it's 1.98, 50 cents of that 1.98 will go to the schools from the city, from our tax rate. So.
All right, is there any other, any other questions to council on this amended budget? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion now among council?
I'll just say, I know our city staff and city manager have been working on this. For me, of voting yes on this is a yes to move this forward. There's a process that we have to go through and that we have to follow, and it needs to move forward. There is a second reading. We'll have another work session and work out everything as it pertains to this entire budget. But this will move it forward at the 1.98 for now, and I feel like that, you know, I'm saying yes to moving it forward and to continue working on this. You know, we've gone from 2.25 to 1.98 now, and I think we can, we can make some more progress. So I appreciate staff and everyone of digging in and working to get this as low as we possibly can, so.
Other council?
Yes, we want to be very conscientious and do everything we can and take everything into account. Part of what we take into account are the services we offer and what quality we have in our city and with our city staff. So as we look at it, I think staff has looked and feel like much below the 1.98 gets us into some cuts into some of the quality and some of the services that we provide. But we will talk more about that at our work session and see what we can do to maintain the quality services that we have and the quality in our city that we're so proud of, which of course very much includes our school system. So we'll be looking at that further. We've done a lot, but our schools, our city staff has worked extraordinarily hard with trying to come through and ask all our department heads to go back and look at the budgets they submitted and really try to get where we can be at the best spot.
This $1.98 actually continues to include the $5 million bond for baseball. It also includes the 100 and, what is it, $125,000 for Melrose. So just, so those of you who are here concerned about those two things, I will tell you that when we say that our city staff has worked extremely hard, they have. It is a challenge to hear when people say that this council doesn't support our school system, when we, when we look at the dollars that are allocated, that we work to make sure, and we look at our city staff that works incredibly hard. If you remember not that long ago, how hard our city staff worked during Hurricane Helene, our police department, our fire department, all those folks. And so when we're talking about these, when you talk about the needs of the school system, we understand that, and we recognize that. And we recognize that you all need to be fully supported. We are one entity. Our county taxes- Our county taxes continue to go up because I'm part of that. We've encouraged our county commissioners to work real hard to stop taking money from our city schools. They have, they have just consistently done that. When I was on the county commission, they did that. We have a really nice jail, and it's not nearly big enough if we continue to take money from education. We need a bigger jail. Education is incredibly important to the economic development of this, of our community. And so our city staff has really worked very hard in order to be able to keep both the baseball project and Melrose in this upcoming budget. But as you heard a few minutes ago from Mr. Kirk, we are looking, and all of you, it impacts everybody in here who's a property owner, your property taxes will probably go up. They certainly will go up in the county, which they have consistently done year after year after year. And your city council is working very hard, and your city staff is working very hard to make sure that our city schools are supported and that our community doesn't have to, to really carry this massive burden. When the tax assessment dropped, it'd been ten years since we had a real property assessment, and all of a sudden it dropped across Sullivan County, across the state without warning. And we're looking at these, this huge impacts for everyone in our community. And so we, as a city council, recognize that we had, we had some work to do, and we've been working very hard to do it while at the same time maintaining the services that we need to do for, across our city. And that includes our schools. Every, everybody sitting up here supports our schools. And I, and I'll, I'll just drop back a little bit for a little bit of just chronological order. I was very much opposed to the baseball project from, from the start because we, I don't like, I do not like going into bonded indebtedness. I don't like it. I'm a physical conservative, I don't like it. But the reason that I finally moved, when it was, we talked about what was happening down at, at Whitetop. We tried to work with Boyd Sports there. We were working with the school system. We, we had hard work to do. There was disagreements. People were like that three-way, that you're, that, that worked, that partnership together. We were trying to move in that direction, and it's, it's a challenge working together. I mean, it's just the nature of working with people, right? So we're trying to work in that direction, and then we had, we had a hiccup. But the reason that I was, supported it at Whitetop was because it was going to benefit our high school. And that was the case for a lot of people on council. Hey, we're going to try to make this thing work so that our high school has a great stadium. And then we moved to Todd Houston Field. That really, I was a holdout for quite a while until we really made sure that it was going to really benefit Tennessee High School. And I voted no on the first reading, and I voted yes on the second one because we had ironed those things out. From my perspective, that thing was working on. Melrose, we were work, our city staff and school staff were working to develop that partnership. They did, they were doing a great job. Our Parks and Rec Director and Kurt, I mean, they do, they do a great job working together. They really do. Better, better job than the council and the board, I can tell you that. We're very thankful for them, and they were working in that process. We had another little hiccup in there. But we're still talking to Boyd Sports about this baseball project, and we're still talking about Melrose. So I just want you all to know that. So our city staff has worked very hard, looking at different ways that they, they can cut things or delay them. And I'll also let you know, this past year, we, we had ninety million dollars in our budget for, for, to do ADA for Melrose. This current year, it's going to be one-twenty-five, and in twenty-seven, it's a half a million dollars for Melrose. Those are, those are tax dollars. So just, I just want you to be aware that when we talk about this, we, we are really thinking about across the board how this is going to impact our citizens. And we hear from them, you heard from one tonight, that they're concerned about how this is going to bump up. And so that's at the heart of what our council's working on. I just, I wanted you to know that, as we, that those things that you're concerned about that are in our budget, we've heard you. We've heard our school system, and we've worked as a council and as a city staff to make sure that they're in there. So now we can move forward. So we have a motion and a second. There's been discussion, don't see any more discussion. So Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes, for now.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen. It's an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Holly, will you please present on this item?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-five fourteen amends appropriated funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The drug fund would be amended to a hundred and thirty thousand. The debt service fund would be amended to three million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven dollars. Stormwater fund would be amended to be a hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, eighty-seven dollars. The general purpose school fund would be amended to be forty-nine million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The school capital projects fund would be amended to be eight million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That also includes transfers. Two general fund from stormwater would be increased to be by, I'm sorry. Two general fund from stormwater would be five hundred, five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, sorry. Two capital, two capital facilities fund from general fund is two million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And two school capital projects fund from the general purpose school fund is eight million, sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Are there any questions of counsel for Holly on this, the ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen?
Not a question, but just being sure people understand that this is straightening up our budget. We're almost to the end. I assume we'll have at least one more adjustment. So it's, it's getting our books to agree with each other with what we budgeted and what we've actually spent. So it's a business item to get this.
This is the first reading, and you'll have a second reading on June nineteenth, I believe.
Right.
Does the transfer for the general purpose school fund, does that include the, the local bonus?
This is a transfer from, it's from, it's from the general purpose school fund to the school capital projects fund. They had projects that rolled, and things are not going to complete, or things are going to be, just to make sure that the appropriate spending is appropriated to complete the fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Holly? All right, is there a motion to take action on Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen?
I'll move to approve the ordinance twenty-five fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address counsel on Ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion among counsel? Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
And we have three ordinances for second reading tonight. The first one, ordinance twenty-five dash eight, it's an ordinance fixing the rates charged for water sold by the city of Bristol, Tennessee. This item was presented by Kelly Bourgeois during the public hearing earlier this evening, and the public had an opportunity to comment during that period. Are there any questions for Ms. Bourgeois on this matter? Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash eight?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash A, fixing the rates charged by water sold by the city of Bristol.
All right, is there?
I'll second it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have ordinance twenty-five dash nine, it's an ordinance fixing the rates charged for sanitary sewer service provided by the city of Bristol. This item was also presented by Ms. Bourgeois during the public hearing earlier this evening, and the public had an opportunity to comment during that public hearing. Any questions for Ms. Bourgeois on this matter? All right, is there a motion to approve? We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have ordinance twenty-five dash ten. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, general provisions relating to zoning. Chapter Three, residential business, residential districts. Chapter Four, business districts of the zoning ordinance to include requirements for the orientation of residential structures located within such districts. This item was also presented by, was presented by Ms. Young during the public hearing earlier this evening, and the public had an opportunity to comment during that public hearing. Are there any questions for Ms. Young on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to continue to thank our planning commission for the work that they've done. And I know Jason Brewer's here, who chairs that commission, and they have been doing a whole lot of work with our staff. Don't want to forget thanking our staff with working with different zoning ordinances, et cetera, trying to do the best we can to be good for our residents and our businesses.
Any other discussion? Mary Lee, can you call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have four resolutions for consideration tonight. The first, Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-nine, resolution authorizing the city to apply for a grant to fund the development of an updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Operation Director Mike Maynes will present.
Mayor Hutton, members of the city council, this is a great opportunity we have to, to obtain some funding from the state, and it's extremely important that we develop a master plan for the city and parks recreation for years to come. The grant is through TDEC. It's in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars we would be obtaining from the state with a match from Bristol of twelve thousand and for a total of sixty to get this project done. Again, I can't emphasize enough that this will give us some direction and guidance down the road. It will set short and long-term goals. It will look at recreational facilities and also programming events and services. So we are excited about this opportunity. As you're aware, we've looked really hard at ways to obtain funding in this community, whether it be through grant funding or private donations in general. So I come to unite for that authorization, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Maynes from counsel? Is there a motion? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion among counsel? Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash six-zero, a resolution setting public hearings on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Bristol by owner consent and on the related plan of services. Bristol, Tennessee essential service property, Highway three ninety-four. Chair Young will present.
Thank you, Mayor Hutton. Tonight I'm here to seek your approval on a resolution to proceed with the annexation proceedings to annex an eighty-five acre parcel to the location of the new SBT substation on Highway three ninety-four. The request was made by BTES. We will be working through the next several months with different public hearings going forward with Planning Commission and then future public hearings with City Council. We will discuss the plan of services you have in your packet and on the screen with City, with Planning Commission as a next step, and, and all of the services, most of the services will be provided to this property immediately. We will recommend at this point in time an M-two zone for the property, and we'll be having a public hearing with the Planning Commission on that in July.
Any questions of counsel for Ms. Young?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and, is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on Resolution twenty-five dash six-zero? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have Resolution twenty-five dash six-one. It's a resolution authorizing expanding the scope of engineering services with CDM Smith for wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Director of Utilities, Mr. Mark Quickle, will present. Mr. Quickle?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. The resolution before you, the resolution before you is for our wastewater treatment plant. It is a in, engineering project that was originally for a centrifuge system at the wastewater treatment plant that that project kind of ballooned out of, out of a feasible price. So we had to drop that project temporary, temporarily, and between the city, InfraMark and BVUA, we assessed current needs and came up with additional projects that could utilize the EDA funds that were applied for in twenty-twenty-two. And so before you now is the engineering design on those updated projects.
Awesome. Are there any questions of counsel for Mr. Quickle? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash six-one?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
We have Resolution twenty-five dash six-two, a resolution repealing Resolution twenty-five dash fifty and rescinding authority to enter into a stadium operating agreement with Boyd Sports LLC and Bristol, Tennessee City Schools for the operation of a stadium at Todd Houston Baseball Field. Kelly Bourgeois will present.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. At the May sixth city council meeting, you approved Resolution twenty-five dash fifty, which authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Boyd Sports and Bristol, Tennessee City Schools for the operation of the baseball stadium that is to be built. Following that meeting, city received notice from the school district that they'll not sign the operating agreement until an agreement is in place for their use of the Melrose building. Given this, I'm recommending that the city council formally act to repeal Resolution twenty-five dash fifty and rescind your granting of authority to enter into the stadium operating agreement between the city, Boyd Sports and Bristol, Tennessee City Schools at this time. Should the stadium continue to move forward, once all three parties to the agreement are ready to sign, the city council can vote again to approve and authorize entry into that agreement. This is being done to ensure there isn't a partially executed contract active for an unspecified period of time. Staff respectfully requests the city council approve Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-two, which repeals Resolution twenty-five dash fifty and rescinds that authority to enter into the stadium operating agreement with Boyd Sports and Bristol, Tennessee City Schools at this time. And again, as you'll note, within the resolution, it does state that the city council can, at a future date, enter into that agreement again or a different agreement. That is up to the city council, and we would bring it back to you for, for action at the point where all three parties were ready to sign.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among counsel?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Bourgeois, for those that maybe did not hear, we, this is being suggested to be rescinded because we did not have the correct signatures and agreement that we needed in place. And it left the people of Bristol in an open-ended contract, so, which is, is not a best practice under any circumstances. The Resolution twenty-five sixty-two does in fact, though, allow us to go back into an agreement once we have appropriate, once we have an understanding that the signatures will be acquired in a timely manner. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we've gone from May sixth until today, June third, and have, has Boyd Sports been willing to sign off on what we had agreed to?
Yes.
Yes, so we're waiting on the school system to sign off.
Correct, however, I, my concern is that we would have two parties signing the agreement without the third, and, and I don't want that to happen. We need to have all three parties ready to sign the agreement at the same time.
And my understanding is that the school system didn't want to sign the agreement just now because the agreement for the baseball is, has now, what has been, has been tied to Melrose. And my understanding was that Kurt Rutherford and Mike Maynes, both of our professionals, had worked very diligently on that and just about had something to bring to us. But in light of where we are right now, we'll rescind this with the hopes that you'll bring to us, Mike, what we need. And then if, if it's the will of council, we can enter back into an agreement. Is that your understanding? Mike says yes. Kurt, is that your understanding? Mike, would you like to address this? I would appreciate it.
So Kurt and I, we've been continuing our work. It's been a journey, most certainly. And we've met with our, the coaches of the wrestling team. We've talked baseball quite a few times about the two different facilities. So that work hasn't stopped. And with everything we have going on, we've got some great stuff going on here in Bristol, building of a new ten-million-dollar playground structure, which is donated to Bristol, the funding. And, and so, but this, we knew was a priority. And in fact, tomorrow- And in fact, tomorrow, you know, we'll drive down to Knoxville, Kurt and I, and we'll take a look at some plans for the stadium and see what it looks like. But it is a very difficult decision. I've been through this before in Lisbon. It's tough because there's only so much money to go around, but we have never stopped wanting to do what's right for the kids of Bristol. That's what it's all about at the end of the day. And, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Kurt and we'll continue our, our work.
If, if anything other than that has been construed to anyone here tonight, I believe you do not have all the facts and information. Mr. Wright?
Wright.
Wright?
Rife.
Rife, oh, good. Right, gotcha. There's more than just the two million dollars from Boyd Sports involved. There are amenities that would be transferred here from the Smokey Stadium as we understand it. We also know that Major League Baseball is interested in hosting camps and training sessions here. We, so there's more than two million dollars in investment from Boyd Sports. There's also an investment of interest and time from Major League Baseball. We have not wavered up until most recently on the five million dollars and so it has always been council's intent to provide this first and foremost for our students and for our young people. I have a grandson that is playing baseball right now, loves it. Mike Maynes will tell you, when the situation at White Top began to fall apart, I called him the Saturday morning of Memorial Day, two years ago. Mike, was it two years ago? And I said, you know, we're not getting anywhere with White Top because I didn't think it would be a viable project if the school system wasn't involved because the own, the main reason that we are interested in doing this is to provide this amenity for our students. And so Mike was gracious enough to meet me over there on the Saturday morning of Memorial Day. Malin has been instrumental in this every step of the way. This council has supported it, coming and going, and, and we've caught a lot of flak because of, of the amount of money. And so it's incredulous to me that there have been postings on social media that we don't support our students or the schools, that, that we should look at Kingsport and what they're doing. And last Tuesday, Kingsport pulled back a million dollars that they had promised. I mean, I just don't understand it. I've tried, I've tried. But we're here and the rescission at this point is not absolute, but it's necessary because we've got one party that has signed it. If we had a second party such as Boyd Sports to come in and sign it right now, we are obligated. And we didn't feel like it was an obligation that would be in the best interest of Bristol unless everybody was in on it. So to your point, I just want you to understand that this has been a long walk and we're still here trying to make it happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? I, I will, so you heard from Mike and I can attest that he and Kurt are, they work really well together. I'll say it again, and we're very appreciative for all of their work. They're doing, they're really doing fantastic work. And we were moving forward, thinking about Melrose and all of those pieces coming together. And, and we did receive, you could see it in the agenda, we did receive word from our school board. Really, personally, it took, it kind of caught me off guard, the way it was written. But I, I will say that a couple of members of the school board did reach out and say that really wasn't the intent. However, we, we, all we had was what was written and so we went with, well, it seems like the school board may be trying to step away. We can only read it the way it was written. We got clarification, but in the process, we, we have to work through. So just understand that when we talk about rescinding this, we're still at work trying to make sure that, that we're moving forward on Melrose in some capacity, we're moving forward on baseball so that we can address these things. We're, we're making every effort. I know that doesn't, I mean, I know that, that frustrates some folks. It's just, it's the nature of trying to work through challenges and so we'll continue to do that as best we can moving forward. So we have a motion and a second. Let's see, any more discussion? Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Aker?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right, we're now to the consent agenda. Ms. Bourgeois, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes. You have the minutes of the May sixth city council meeting, minutes of the May twenty-second city council work session, minutes of the May thirtieth city council call work session, approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-three, approving a proposal from Snyder Signs for a replacement of the gateway sign at the corner of State Street and Volunteer Parkway. Approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-four, authorizing payment to Sullivan County for maintenance of radio consoles and the eight hundred megahertz system for the police department. Approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-five, authorizing the purchase of an HVAC center for Slater Community Center Gymnasium. Approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-six, awarding a proposal for reinsurance for the self-funded health insurance plan. Approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-seven, authorizing engine repair of the solid waste knuckle boom truck number four oh four. And approval of Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-eight, authorizing purchase of ten two thousand twenty-five Ford Explorer Police Interceptor all-wheel-drive vehicles under the Johnson City contract.
Would any member of council like any item removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Anyone in the audience like to address counsel on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Aker?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Now we have time for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I want to point out, like you did, Representative John Crawford is here and I have to say, it's so nice to see a, a state-elected representative come to a local council meeting. It, it doesn't happen often and it's very much noticed and appreciated. And I have to give a huge thank you to Representative Crawford for the million dollars that we were able to obtain from the state for our skate park. That is all due to his, his work and we just are so appreciative of that. That would not have gotten off the ground, I don't believe, without the work on that. So I just wanted, yes. We had an arts stakeholder meeting last Thursday at the train station to talk about what the arts look like in Bristol moving forward, especially with the acquisition of the LC King property. We had eighty participants approximately attend that, that work session or that workshop. That is a huge turnout for any type of public meeting and we're, it was a, a great cross-section of all of our arts community members. We're so excited about moving that project forward and what that looks like. And it's the first of many meetings to, to see what we are going to be able to do with that LC King building. And again, that was a huge purchase that we are moving forward with. We have to close by June thirteenth. But it was a cost-neutral purchase for us and I think that's critically important and especially to preserve a historic building and obtain more than sixty parking stalls downtown for the city. So very excited about what that holds for us for the future. The drag races at the Bristol Motor Speedway are this weekend. Excited to participate in that. We have a number of park and recreation events coming up. Just a few of them are Popsicles in the Park on June thirteenth, Grill and Chill with Dad on June fourteenth and then Big Truck Day on June twenty-eighth. We also have Cops and Bobbers happening this Saturday at Steel Creek Park from eight to two. And you have in your, that was sitting on your table, thank you Terry for these, they're wonderful, just bring home with you. We have the Sounds of Summer starting, so those are our Tuesday and Thursday music events down, in our downtown center. Our Farmer's Market has started every Saturday and then our first Border Bash is next Friday, June thirteenth. So lots going on. Summer has kicked off with a bang and we're excited for all of the events that our Community Engagement and Events Department, Park and Rec Department and, and all of our staff are going to be providing over this next few months.
Awesome, thank you so much. We have time for city council comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Fire Robin.
Thank you. They know I always have them, so. So I want to also thank Commissioner Harvey, Cheryl Harvey, who's here and want to particularly thank her for her work as well as our other county commissioners' work on our Sullivan County Health Department locating in Bristol. It's not done yet, but it's moving along just like all these other projects as well. And I want to thank our city staff, Ms. Bourgeois and others for working with that. And I also express appreciation to our council who have supported. It's been twenty-seven years since we've had a branch of our health department here in Bristol. It was in the old hospital and it went away. It didn't move when the hospital moved. So we're very excited that that continues to move. It's going to be a project that we work together with Sullivan County. So we think things are, are looking good with that. I want to also thank staff. I watched and I recommend everybody watch the historical properties awards ceremony that is available, I guess on our YouTube channel, John Wright. I watched it from the newsletter clicking on. But if you haven't watched that, it's real fun to see the different properties that are recognized and the people who have put a lot of love and money into historical properties. And congratulations to our school system and Kurt Rutherford was there to accept, along with Rebecca House, to accept for the Stone Castle, which we could say it's about time, but I think we have a historical marker and so. But great deal and also John Staff and Ann Dunham and our videographer, videographers, everybody who put that together. So I highly recommend, you look at it and it's Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia, I think we've combined for the last several years. And that's really nice to see us do it as a community. Border Bash has started, I might take your, leave yours. The thirteenth of June and then the twenty-seventh, our Border Bash Downtown and is celebrating twenty-five years. And some of us have been around doing this for twenty-five years and really appreciate the people who originated that musical event for downtown with Coming Together. And the two main, two of the main people are Jerry Goodpasture and, and Gillon Water, who worked on that and they're no longer with us. Also on the twenty-seventh, our Symphony of the Mountains, which serves our region and is at the Paramount quite frequently. They have an outdoor concert at Cumberland Park. It's free, so you can go do a little Border Bash, go do the symphony, go back and do some Border Bash. Lots of different things going on. And then I'll just continue to thank Mike Maynes and Kurt Rutherford, as well as all of our staff but for the work that y'all do for your own jobs. And I'll say, we have a lot going on. School system has a lot. We have a lot. Parks and Rec, we have a lot going on in our community. So they're working on these, but there's a whole lot of other projects that they have to work on too. So we just really appreciate the work that y'all do. Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to know what Kelly said. Thank you, Representative Crawford, for what you've done for, for our community and for being here tonight. We do appreciate it. And also to let everyone know that on June the sixteenth at seven PM, that we're going to have, the schools, I guess, will have the tire flip down State Street, Tennessee High versus Virginia High. So everyone, it's June the sixteenth at seven PM down State Street. So this will be something new and appreciate Mr. Brewer. I think he's kind of headed this up and.
Is he going to be out flipping those tires? Come on, you can start it off. You do one.
That's all I have.
And just remember, before we all get together again, the July Fourth Extravaganza in Anderson Park. Great, great family evening and it happens to be on Friday this year. And so we hope everyone will come out and celebrate the Fourth of July.
I'll just keep it kind of light. One of my friends was calling, calls on a daily basis, checking on me and I just kept saying, I can't talk right now, budget, budget, budget. And when I called her back, she said, if you raise the tax rate, I will not vote for you in the reelection. And I believe her. But we had long talks and I hung up the phone and, and I would just like to say, whereas the school system, the school board only have that to focus on, we have so much more. And we are working around the clock. I mean, we sacrifice so much time with our families. I work full-time and I just don't think people realize, I certainly didn't realize until I started doing it. And when I hung up the phone with her after a long talk and I thought, when was the last time I saw her? And in five months, I'd seen her twice and once was for my birthday. That is the only socializing I've done. And it's just, I would just like to say that there is so much that goes on to this. We don't always have time to meet with the school system and spend as much time as we would like to. Doesn't mean we don't want to, it just means there's just not enough time in the day.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. This meeting is adjourned.